Please stand for the Mayor of Crewe.
Workplace injury. And over to the Mayor.
Would you please be seated first of all, please? Welcome to the annual meeting of the Crewe Town Council. I've got a little speech I'd like to make first before we begin, so it won't take long. I would like to say it's been a real honour and a privilege to have been Mayor of Crewe this last year because of the wonderful people I've had the privilege of meeting who work so hard behind the scenes and help so many people. And I also want to thank those who have helped me during this year. Firstly, Ben Minshew, who was Mayor of Crewe for two years. He shared his experiences and wisdom with me and even accompanied me on occasions. And also a big thank you to councillor Lena Hovden, who also accompanied me on many other occasions and made things so much easier for me. And also a thank you to Pete Turner, our town clerk, for his advice and patience. In fact, a big thank you to all the staff here at the Crewe Town Council. But I must give a very special thank you to Leanne Wood, the support officer. Believe me, without her help and patience and understanding, I couldn't have managed. And I must add, on top of all that, she makes the best cup of tea in Cheshire, let alone in Crewe. And finally, I wish for our new Mayor-elect that he too will have as good a year as I've had. Thank you. First item is to receive apologies for absence.
We have apologies from councillors Pratt, Bragston and Coyley.
It's councillor Hovden, yes.
I have two apologies from councillor Byer for his dispensation.
Thank you. Do we need a second? Do we have a second then? Thank you. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Item two is to note declarations of members' interests.
No objections.
Item three is to confirm and sign the minutes of the Crewe Town Council meeting held on 28th of March 2023. Can I have a proposal and a second for the minutes from a councillor who was at that meeting? Don't all stand up at once. Thank you. And can I have a second, please? All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions?
The abstentions are more votes who entered the meeting, so thank you.
Item four, we now have a period of public participation. A period not exceeding 15 minutes for members of the public to ask or submit comments in relation to the published agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to speak, please? Yes.
I'm the Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the new members on their election on behalf of the Putting Group First. And I particularly like to congratulate the new councillor, councillor Tony Mortimer, who is one of my colleagues, the first Putting Group First councillor ever to be elected and hopefully the first of many. And also councillor Nick Pratt, who also is elected for the first time. And thankfully now the town council has two members of the opposition for the first time and that can only be good for democracy. The town council says it has a strong voice representing the best interests of Crewe. I don't doubt that because the town is in a deplorable state of decline, a sad spiral of decline. Crewe is the capital of potholes in Cheshire East, it's the capital of crime in Cheshire East, capital of fly-tipping in Cheshire East, the capital of blocked drains in Cheshire East. I could go on, this could go on. The Royal Arcade development is already years behind schedule. And sadly, we're now seeing the multi-storey car park rising from the ashes of what's been what seems like a bomb site for years now in the town centre. Now, why on earth hasn't the town council objected to this multi-storey car park? Because nobody has asked for a multi-storey car park in Crewe. Nobody wants a multi-storey car park in Crewe and most people won't use it. It will end up as a white elephant. And if you look in the portfolios in Hamley and Soddenford, they've built multi-storey car parks which are now losing hundreds of thousands a county year. So why hasn't the town council objected to this at any stage and why now it's being built sadly? The town centre is in a deplorable state and many of Crewe residents have stopped coming into the town centre because there is nothing there. Jay Sam. Just on the issue of potholes, on behalf of Putting Group First, we did a Freedom of Information request and the figures from Cheshire East on potholes are shocking. The numbers of reported potholes in 22, 23 were almost three times as high as they were in 2015. The number of repairs done last year were actually 23% less, 23% down on what the previous year. So the number of potholes are going through the roof and the number of potholes repaired are going down by almost a quarter. It's one of the biggest concerns of residents in Crewe is the potholes. Some people have stopped using certain roads because they're so dangerous and they're particularly dangerous for people on two wheels where they could come off. Now, you can't say that there's been no money for potholes. The government gave 5.8 million this year, 5.8 million the year before and 6.8 million the year before that. And that is a large sum of money to repair potholes throughout Cheshire East. So why haven't they been repaired in Crewe? That is the big question, that's what people in Crewe are asking. They're crying out for these potholes to be repaired and as the voice of Crewe, the town council should be calling for an immediate meeting, urgent meeting, between the town council, the head of highways and the chair of the highways committee. And that should be happening straight away because people in Crewe want action. They don't want words, they want action. And so that is something that needs to be done urgently. And finally, Madam Mayor, I like the idea that the council has done in terms of the makers market, which is being done on a Haddock basis. But I would question why it's being held on a Sunday when most of the shops are closed. It's far better to have it on a Saturday when the shops are open. And that would also have the outside market. The outside market sadly is totally depleted, virtually extinct. The last time I looked in a few weeks, there was three stores on the outside market in Crewe. It's a disgrace, nobody's going to come into town for an outside market in three stores. And again, why aren't the town council banging on the door of the local council saying, why aren't you reviving the outside market if you have a vibrant outside market? And if you had, you should be holding events every weekend, not just one weekend in two or one weekend in four. You should be holding events every weekend to attract people. What Crewe needs is more shoppers, more people coming into the town and make it more vibrant. And then some of the empty shops, there's 67 empty shops in Crewe, 27 knocked down by Cheshire East. The town centre has been depleted, demolished and something needs to be done about it. And people are very angry, people out there in the town are very angry that something has not been done about it. And the town council should be speaking up. I know it's not your responsibility, the potholes and the town centre, but you're the voice and you should be speaking up. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. In relation to the comments made, the town council made objection to the application associated with the multi-storey car park. So it did object as a point of accuracy in that state of debate. Additionally, potholes make representations of Cheshire East on a near daily but also weekly basis on the issues we face in the town and we get some results and equally we do meet with the senior management directors of Cheshire East on these issues. And we make representation of disappointment felt by any resident of Crewe on that and the disappointment of anyone travelling on those roads. With regards to the makers market, it's on a Sunday for several reasons. First of all, the parking is free on a Sunday. Second of all, to find an operator isn't very easy and we found an operator who could operate in this town at scale and success and the day they preferred for successful operations was a Sunday and it proves to be correct. The outdoor market is the responsible Cheshire East Council and outdoor markets across the country in significant decline due to the change in shopping habits in the UK and not a reflection of the operation of that market in specifics. Additionally, the town council puts on a calendar events, all of which free to access, including an operational summer which saw over 50 accessible events for families through the summer which were free for all families. And in terms of footfall, the town council wants to see high footfall, hence the work that's going forward associated with the makers market and the events that go on. But equally, we fight against an ongoing national trend of changing shopping habits.
Councillor Rhodes, yeah, I'll say a few words. I'm sorry that Mr Sylvester has chosen this positive occasion of our mayor making to make such a negative statement. I'm sorry that it has been, they have seen fit to make this a political meeting. It must be an embarrassment, councillor Maudslay, that their leader has chosen to make this statement at our mayor making. It is totally against the spirit in which we work as a town council, which is not political. All the points councillor Sylvester made are Cheshire East matters. They are not matters to do with the council, nor do we have a chair of the highways committee anymore. The pothole situation is one across the borough and across the country, which is why the government has seen fit to give some money. But that money is specifically for potholes and will go absolutely nowhere to repair the roads in Crewe or anywhere else. In fact, the highways money given to Cheshire East by the government was cut this year, not increased. The town is waiting to be redeveloped and we all eagerly wait for that. And the town council vaguely talks to Cheshire East Council and asks about progress on redevelopment of the town. Perhaps with hindsight, the Conservatives' decision to go with the redevelopment of the town of private developer was not the wisest. But I am very, very sorry that those present have had to listen to such a desperately negative perception of Crewe. I think it's about time that we started saying Crewe is one of the nicest, best places to live. All those houses on the outskirts of town have been occupied. People want to live in Crewe, Crewe is a good place to live. And I'm sorry that councillor Sylvester has such a negative view of the place. Thank you. We now come to item five. This is to confirm the Mayor-elect as Mayor of Crewe for 2023, 2024. Can I ask for a proposal and a second for the nomination of the Mayor?
I'm happy to propose councillor Dennis Straight Francis to be Mayor of the town of Crewe for the forthcoming year. Dennis, whom we all know, he has a south-east accent where he was born. I believe it was Deptford or Dartford, one of them. However, he has been a good citizen, resident and role model in Crewe since 1988. Dennis was a serviceman and served in the RAF. He still maintains his connections with the armed services because he's closely involved with the Armed Forces Association and is a member of the British Legion. He has turned a community champion and is an active member of Men in Cheshire. I do believe that the ladies have allowed it, we mentioned Cheshire, I think that's just the, I mainly wrote there, but if not, you should need to put that back. He has links with the Sherbrooke Tunnel, which is a community centre for residents on the Sherbrooke Estate. And we know that a lot of work goes on there, not just with Dennis, but on lots of the councillors, active as well as a very good residents association. He is a volunteer now, I believe, an organisation which supports our multiple residents. You can see by that Dennis gives a lot of his retirement and the time to look in after and look at all this. On the downside, although he is a Chelsea supporter, he, like myself, is a Cruelic season ticket holder. So we do have some emotional moments through the season, do you know?
That might get cry, John.
Dennis has been a councillor for many years and a Crewe Town Council for eight years. Dennis was a deputy mayor last year and supported Nam in the numerous roles and called in Dennis to attend. So thank you for that, Dennis. I'm sure Dennis will fulfil his duties with his usual jovial style. And I would say in brackets, unique. And I wish him every success in his year as Mayor. I know.
Thank you, John.
May we have a second? Thank you. Any against? All in favour?
That's you, Madam Miss Chair.
Thank you. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Item six on the agenda is to confirm the deputy mayor-elect as the deputy mayor of Crewe for 2023, 24. Can I ask for a proposal and a second for the nomination of the deputy mayor? Yes, councillor, I'd like that.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I would have prepared a 35-minute speech which you'll be delighted to listen to. I'll have you listen to a very brief speech earlier on, I'll keep mine as short as possible. It gives me great pleasure to propose that councillor Dawn Clark be the deputy mayor of Crewe Town for the forthcoming year. Known Dawn for many years in different roles, which I won't go into now, but she will be an absolutely excellent ambassador for the borough when called upon to do so, that's sort of the town version, she's called upon to do so. But that's in another place.
Oh, yes.
So, close your hand, thank you.
Can I have a second, please? Thank you, councillor. All in favour? Any against? Any abstentions?
One abstention. That's carried.
Thank you and congratulations. As my final act as Mayor of Crewe, I adjourn the meeting to enable the incoming Mayor and Deputy Mayor to receive the insignia of office.
All stand for the Mayor of Crewe. Please stand for the Mayor of Crewe.
Please be seated. Somebody asked me earlier, are you nervous? I'm not nervous. Do I tell lies? Only sometimes. So first of all, I'd like to propose a toast. No, I don't. A vote of thanks to the outgoing Mayor. I know she's done a fantastic, oh, there she is. I know she's done a fantastic job. Everybody you speak to says what a good job she's done. And as a deputy, didn't have a lot to do, but what I did do, I enjoyed. And all I can say is thank you very much, Nan, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. Thank you. Stay where you are. I won't get used to it, I'll just tell you. If you'd be up to it.
And we are the Crewe Town Council. This is it. And don't forget, any citizens, right, if it was in the council, you can wear it.
Thank you, sir.
Right. I'd also like to take this opportunity to recognise members of the town council who have served the council for the past 10 years. And they are councillors Ben Minshew, Dear Rhodes and Nan Morgan. If you could all come this way, please. Item eight on the agenda is my opportunity to speak to you as the Mayor of Crewe. That's it. I would like to thank all the councillors for electing me. I don't normally make promises because I find that you make a promise and sometimes it's very, very hard to keep them. But I promise you one thing, I will do the best I can. I can't promise anything else. If I can't give you the best I can, then I shouldn't be here. So that is my promise to you. This year, I will do the very best that I can as a person. So anybody who knows me knows that when I get upset, I speak quite strongly. I'm trying to be as polite as I can be, but there's a few people over there who know exactly what I mean. But I think that the town council is doing a good job. In fact, a very good job considering what they have to face. It's been mentioned about the town and I've spoken to quite a few of the people of Crewe and they say to me, it's not a nice place, it's a rubble place. And I always come up with the same thing. You can't make scrambled eggs without breaking eggs and that's what's happening in Crewe. Although there's a lot of places being knocked down, you've got to knock them down if you want to rebuild. And it's taking time, too much time. But at the end of the day, I believe that Crewe will be a lovely place. It's already a lovely place to live compared with where I come from, it's a paradise. And if anybody doesn't believe me, I'll take them to where I come from and show you. I would like to thank the town clerk because he knows and I know that I'm going to depend on him a lot. And it's the same with other councillors. I need your support and I know that I will get your support. It was mentioned that I'm a member of the Rotary Club. We like to help people and unfortunately for me, I find it hard to say no, which is why I'm in so many different things. I'm sure my wife sometimes thinks that I just rent the room there. You can ask her later, she's over there, because I seem to be out more than I'm ever on. Sometimes it's not a bad idea, we don't argue, do we, darling? But you didn't come here to listen to me, so I'm going to sit down and shut up and you won't hear me say that very often. So all I can say is thank you very much for putting me in this position and I will do the best I can. Thank you. Item nine is to note the minutes of the committee meetings held since council in March. There haven't been any meetings since the last meeting of council due to the election period, so we can move to the next item. Item 10 is to appoint a council leader and deputy leader. So do I have a proposal for council leader?
I propose councillor Gilbert.
Thank you councillor Robben, do I have a second? Thank you councillor Yates, all those in favour? All right, that is carried. Eh, sorry. Any against? Any abstentions? Well done councillor Rhodes and thank you for being our leader. And we need a deputy leader. Do I have a proposal for deputy?
If nobody else wants to stand up, it'll be me again, I'll propose councillor Jamie Hess.
Councillor Jamie, do I have a second? Thank you, all those in favour? Against? Abstentions? Sorry, I can't see that one councillor, but thank you very much. Oh, yeah. The next proposal is councillor Rhodes.
Don't pause, Mr Mayor, we move to the next.
I propose, Mr Mayor, that we move the next items on the block rather than going through them individually, probably that's what I said for that.
Have a second then? All in favour? Against? Abstentions? Right, that's carried. Thank you. We therefore move to the last item on the agenda. It is to note the date of the next council meeting is the 13th of June at 7pm. Thank you for joining us tonight. We have a small informal reception for guests in the market hall for those invited to join us. So the council meeting is closed. Thank you.
Please stand from there.